Let's welcome in our guests on the program. They are the full boat here on the Eddie and Steve Show. It's the President of the Berkeley County Commission, Eddie Gokanower. Good morning, Eddie.
Good morning, Rob.
Vice President Steve Catlett. Steve?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good to have you both here. How's life treating you?
Good. Good to be here.
Total plus?
Absolutely.
You're out of the headphones and everything?
Just got back from Canane Valley. I was there Sunday and Monday, meetings with the County Commission Association.
Yes.
And then we got back, HD went along with me, and we got back yesterday evening. So, and we're leaving this afternoon for Charleston, so.
Two fifteen, we'll pick you up.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
A lot of mileage on the vehicle there.
We're meeting with the Secretary of Bumball of the West Virginia Department of Transportation. We met with him back in March, and we're going to meet with him tomorrow, or yeah, tomorrow morning at ten. And then we have a meeting with the head of the West Virginia DEP about our stormwater permit and some other issues with that in the afternoon. So, we're looking forward to the trip, and it should be very interesting.
Very good. Did HD know everybody at Canane?
Well, the association members that are there throughout the state, other commissioners, he's been at several meetings in the past.
Yes. Because HD, he's like the tourism guy, isn't he?
He is, yeah.
You know, restaurants and entertainment.
He knows where every place to eat and all that. So, we got in town, and he said, well, I know, let's go give grab some lunch. And I said, well, I've never been to Thomas, West Virginia. You turn left, you go two miles. If you turn right, always go left and go through Davis to get to either Blackwater Falls or Canane. So, and I just found out this year that my grandfather grew up in Thomas, West Virginia. So, I said, well, let's go there. So, we ate at the Purple Fiddle. We had, we had lunch and had live music and the whole gig, you know. So, it was pretty cool.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah. What'd you have to eat? Good stuff?
I got a turkey roll or something. It had some kind of cranberry sauce. It was pretty good.
What was the main topic of conversation with the county, Association of County Commissioners?
Well, anything and everything. But we're getting prepped for the legislative session coming up again this coming year. So, you know, next year, January. So, that's the main topic. But, you know, I was telling Eddie out in the parking lot earlier that, you know, we have a lawyer that comes in from Fuller Pullman and that organization, and she, Wendy Greve, matter of fact, and we have an hour and a half session where we just ask her questions, and she gives us answers on county issues and stuff. And it's really informative, and just an open session where everybody just gets everything off their chest, and we try to figure it all out. And it's a wonderful thing.
What are, around the fifty-five counties, Steve, what are the chief concerns right now?
Well, the big concern is we all want the safety bill passed because we all, we all have different needs, but we all could benefit from the safety bill, the one percent sales tax thing. So, that's our main concern. But, you know, we're very fortunate. I mean, we have paid firefighters now twenty-four, seven in all of our stations. But it's a real struggle for a lot of communities and counties in the state, you know.
Especially with EMS.
EMS, yeah.
Some places only have one ambulance in the entire county. So, when that ambulance is out, especially in those resort areas. So, if somebody, you know, falls and breaks a leg or twists an ankle, that ambulance is gone for that entire community, let alone the resort. So, those, those are some of the things that they're facing that.
They had a hiker broke his ankle up at Dolly Sod up in Tucker County where Canane is located. And they ended up having to bring a helicopter, and it cost them like forty thousand dollars to fly, to get this person out.
Wow.
I mean, that's the kind of situation. But they have like one ambulance crew for, they have six thousand residents, but they have one million visitors a year to their county.
So, where's all the money go? Like, if they can afford the helicopter, why can't they just?
Oh, they couldn't afford it, believe me. They couldn't afford it.
They couldn't afford it, right? So, they put it on the old credit card. But I guess, what's preventing them from getting more than one ambulance?
Funding.
Just funding?
Yeah. It's about funding, you know.
Even if you get the tourism dollars?
If they get the one percent sales tax, the safety bill passes, they'll have all the money they need to hire more ambulance crews, staff, vehicles, anything they need to solve their issues.
Law enforcement, you know, there's, there's a lot of counties in this state that only have a sheriff, and, and maybe if they're lucky, they may have a chief deputy. That's it. You know, so they're struggling. And that, and they take care of court security and paperwork and everything else.
So, the chief source of funding, is it the only source of funding for a county is the twenty-one percent of the property taxes that you keep?
Property tax, absolutely.
The school gets about eighty percent?
Yep. Seventy-eight, yep.
And there's, and there's no other, the state, does the state rebate any other money to you?
No.
Well, I mean, they'll get some coal severance money, but that's up and down. Yeah, that's not something you would want to hire people off of.
And it fluctuates, so you couldn't hire or use it for that.
Yeah.
I mean, we get about a quarter of a million a year from coal severance, which is.
And you have about a fifty million dollar budget?
Fifty-three, fifty-four, yeah.
So, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is coal severance money. The rest of it is property taxes generated locally. And then some, you're getting the transfer taxes rebated back to you, correct?
We're getting that back that the state was keeping all these years. And that was a big deal. And, you know, it's, the state was keeping literally two and a half to three million dollars a year. And all the money was generated here in Berkeley County, the growth county. And we just asked to get it back. So, we finally got it back. And this is the first fiscal year that we were getting a hundred percent of it that they were keeping back now. So.
And that was known as the Hardy Bill, which Steve, Steve and John worked very hard on that when, even before either one of them were on the commission. So, yeah.
Yeah. Because I was looking for money at the time for Parks and Rec, you know, a way to fund Parks and Rec, and say, well, you know, let's get that money back. And, but the property transfer taxes is a very significant part of our budget. It's, it's worth six million a year now.
Six million?
Yeah.
And then what's the hotel motel tax? That, half of that goes to Parks and Rec, correct?
It's a pass-through.
You don't, you don't keep any of that?
We don't keep any of it. The CVP gets their half.
By, by statute, yeah.
And then the, the park part is discretionary part. But since its inception forty years ago, the park system has gotten the other fifty percent. If it's discretionary. And they've gotten that from the city and county both, because they, they both collect it separately. We both collect it separately.
And?
But that's a million dollars a year now for their half.
For the Parks and Rec?
Mm-hmm.
And the CVP?
Pretty significant, yeah.
Okay. Are there more hotels being constructed in Berkeley County that you're aware of?
Not right now.
Not right now. But, you know, we've had some just recently in the last couple of years, and we're going to get more at some point.
Do you have any idea what the room occupancy in the county is for hotels?
You know, I heard that number back some, several months ago. It was not as, as high as I anticipated it being. It was like right around seventy percent. I think that, I think that's what I remember.
But by having more hotels, the occupancy average for each one has dropped some.
Yeah.
But we have more visitors.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Because there's more, more establishments.
There was, there was two hotels established right there at the old mall in Martinsburg. And I think that that helped push that percentage down a little bit.
Yeah.
Do you know how many rooms are available in the county for hotels?
I don't.
I couldn't tell you that.
Okay.
But it's, it's quite a few, obviously. And with eighty-four thousand vehicles a day on eighty-one, you understand why we need those.
Was there a second issue that came up that was pressing for counties besides this safety tax you're talking about?
Well, the rollback's the other issue. And you know what was interesting this year on the rollback, which was put in nineteen ninety?
Explain the rollback so everybody knows what we're talking about, Steve.
Back in nineteen ninety, there was discrepancy across the state on the assessments. Okay, the assessment in some county. So, to correct that, they put this rollback situation in, and they required everybody to do it. So, now, every county has to appraise their homes every year, and they have to get their appraisal between ninety and a hundred and ten percent. So, our assessor, Larry Hess, tries to come in about ninety-five percent. So, the equity across the state as far as appraising and all has been corrected. And it was corrected a couple of years after it was implemented. But now it's still in place thirty years later. And all it does is hurt growth counties now. In fact, it's hurt us five or six times over the last decade.
Yes.
But even Morgan County and Hampshire County got hit with it last year. These small counties that really need the money, McDowell County even got hit with it, of all people. And even though it only cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars, that's a lot of money for them. And what happens is, when you lose that revenue, so what happens is, if you grow over a hundred and one percent, then you have to roll back your tax rate so that you can't go above that. Now, it's actually a hundred and three because the assessor gets two percent. So, one year, we grew a hundred and nine percent. And we lost eight hundred and some thousand dollars. And here's the thing, it's not just the loss for that year, it's imperperativity. Every year after that, you've lost that money once it's rolled back. So, you lose that amount every year. So, it's cost our budget over the last decade several million dollars a year.
And you say grow by a hundred and nine percent? You talking about population in the county, or revenue, or property values?
Property values.
Property values.
Property assessment, yeah. So, it, it's just an equated law that needs to be gone, you know. And everybody agrees with it, but most people don't even understand it. It's hard to understand, but it's still, it's of no value. And why should a growth county be hurt by, you grow, and then you're penalized for growing, so you lose the revenue to take care of the growth? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It doesn't.
And, and in doing so, we're also asking to have the homestead exemption dollars raised. Whereas, you know, everybody in Berkeley County gets a twenty thousand dollar reduction if you're homestead eligible. You get that twenty thousand dollar, which saves you about two hundred and fifty bucks. But that's a statewide, that's a statewide number. So, because of the values are so high here and in Jefferson, and quite honestly, now even in Morgan, it's, it's still, it's not fair to our, to our seniors on that twenty thousand dollar value. So, we're, we're trying to find out how we can do this. You know, how can we be more fair and, and treat the citizens more fair?
You'd have to go through the legislature to get rollback relief. And I'm going to presume that they're going to look at that as a tax increase, which is why they're not interested in doing it?
It's not a tax increase at all. It keeps the taxes the same is what it does.
But it costs you revenue. So, if you're collecting more revenue,
Costs us revenue.
They're going to look at that as a tax increase, aren't they?
But it's the same tax rate. You just keep it in place, what you have. So, you're not increasing the rate at all or the taxes at all. So, we just want to keep it in place. So, I guess you could perceive it as any way you want. But obviously, and as Eddie said, the homestead, we're trying to get it to forty thousand. Because what was twenty thousand years ago is, is, I don't know, forty even covers it, what it used to be. So.
Sure. Yeah. Sounds like the reverse of, of.
When you get, when, so you have a home that's worth three hundred thousand dollars, okay? That's where it's appraised at. It's assessed at sixty percent of that value, a hundred and eighty thousand, okay? If you're on homestead exemption, sixty-five and older, then you can get another twenty thousand off the hundred and eighty. So, you're paying taxes on a hundred and sixty thousand dollar value. That's how it works. And we're trying to get it to forty thousand.
Right.
So, it would go down to a hundred and forty thousand value.
And base it off of a housing index, the same way that the state should be looking at for our state employees, and our teachers, and our troopers, you know, all those things should be based off of a housing index. It's not our number, it's not their number. It's, it's a federal number that's recognized and used already.
Yeah. I was going to say, it sounds like a reverse of the locality pay, you know, that we're looking for, for teachers and state workers here, that, you know, you've got senior citizens here that are paying more than those in other parts of the state, and you're just trying to even that out. It, how challenging is it when you're in a county such as ours, and we're talking about the limits that you have in how you can have revenue, and yet there are more and more demands based on the, the growth that say, hey, pay for these services. What's, what's the challenge like as a commissioner?
Yeah. It, I mean, it's, it, it's stuff that, that will keep you awake at night, and I swear to God about that. You know, you wake up at two or three o'clock in the morning because it's something that's really been, been laid on you, and you're trying to figure it out. You're trying to be fair. And you, you try to stay within the laws that you currently have. So, you either try and change the law, or you, you suck it up. I mean, and that, and that's sometimes very difficult to do because there's just simply not enough dollars. But what you find, when you go across the state, almost everybody has the same issue. That, it's just, you know, we've got, we've got, we're paying for sixty-eight deputies. We don't currently have sixty-eight. We're at like sixty-one or sixty-two right now. But these guys, they need more deputies in, in Boone County, you know. So, it's just on a little bit smaller scale, but they also have a smaller budget. So, they have the same issues. You know, we, we just recently, in the last three years, increased our EMS fund, our EMS fee. So, you know, so now we've got more EMS units on the road. But it's because we need them. It's not because necessarily we wanted them, we needed them. You know, and same way with the fire. You know, we, we've got two paid firemen at every firehouse, not because necessarily we wanted them, we needed them. So, it's, I, I've, I've always, you know, you know where I came from, and my background, I never thought it was, it was a good thing for people to have to wait when they need help. So, our, our law enforcement, you know, we're trying to, trying to grow that department. You know, we just applied for a safer, or I'm sorry, a cops grant for five additional deputies. And, and you know, we're always thinking, we're always looking, we're always trying to figure out, how can we get, get the staffing up in all of these public safety agencies? Because having not enough people there, number one, you're not going to be as efficient as you need to be. And number two, it's not safe for the people they're trying to protect. And it's not safe to the guys that's trying to protect them.
For Berkeley County, you know, regarding the legislature and, you know, working with the legislature, who are your partners there? And are they as concerned, whether it's delegate, senator, whatever, are they as concerned of what you guys are reporting back?
I think some are. Senator Barrett, Senator Rutter, and of course, the delegates, Hornby, Height.
They work really hard for us.
Work really hard for us.
They do.
And we couldn't ask for anything more from those folks. They fight hard for us. But there's some that aren't fighting as hard and don't get the picture, and they don't understand it. But it's a lot of pressure.
Why do you, why do you think that is?
I think some are ingrained in this, you know, the tax thing, the anti-tax thing so much that they can't, they can't see past that.
Even though it pays for itself, really?
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, that's a shame. But, you know, I, I, you have to respect that. I don't, I don't, I respect their opinion, but I don't always agree with it.
Yeah. So, it's, it's our job to, to try and make sure they understand the entire picture.
And you guys are closer to the ground with like the voters and stuff like that. So, like, you know.
Yeah. I mean, we, we deal with it, with the issues almost daily. I mean, almost daily, we're, we're dealing with some type of, of an issue, sometimes more than one. But, yeah, we're very close, you know. And it's a good place.
Yeah.
It's a good place.
This job is as frustrating as anything I've ever done in my life, but we love every minute of it. And let me tell you something, we've got some wonderful things going on. We're going to have impact fees November first. We've got, we're, we've got construction going on on, to build Inwood Park, okay? We've got fiber optics going all through Back Creek Valley and other parts of Berkeley County. Wonderful thing. Our response time, I served on the ambulance authority, in the last year, in the last few months, has dropped from eight and a half minutes to less, about seven and a half minutes now for response.
That's on, that's on scene.
Yeah.
That's on scene.
Which is tremendous.
Yeah.
Twenty-four, seven firefighters. This guy fought for, and he serves on the fire board, and they help with that. It's an unbelievable, wonderful thing that's happened to this community for safety, public safety.
If you remember, Hunter Wilson and I came on, and we spoke about the necessity for the increase in the commercial rates. And truthfully, that is what helped, and the public voted on this. It was, it was on a referendum. But that's what put us in the position where we can employ these firefighters, because we're now partnering with the fire board that we've never been able to do before. And Donna Cross and her team, to be able to get staffing into these stations. But on the flip side, we're also going to help them with impact fees on purchase of a new equipment for, to increase their capacity. And with TIF funds, we're going to be able to help also with fire and EMS as we grow these stations. Like, we're getting ready to do a renovation to Vedington Substation. The fire and ambulance are all coming together, Vedington Fire Department. Everybody's coming together to be able to do this, to take that station to a twenty-four hour day, a week station. So, twenty-four hours, that the busiest station in the county will now become from twelve to twenty-four. And, you know, it, it's, it's truly a great thing. I mean, it, it truly is. We're very, very fortunate, you know, that, that the public supported that, and to be able to move forward with, with the staffing and, and the needs that we have.
When is that up for renewal, Eddie?
It's not. It's, it's one time.
Permit, yeah.
Permit and funding?
Uh-huh. Yeah.
Yeah. And I was going to ask that, when you mentioned cops grants and, and any other type of grants or, or federal funding that comes in, how guaranteed is that from year to year? In other words, if you get a cops grant and you're ready to bring in five new officers, how long does that last before potentially you have to then absorb those costs?
Three years.
It's a three-year grant.
Three-year program.
Yeah.
And then you, you take over.
And then, right. Then it's your job, no chance to renew that, other than to maybe add new deputies, or?
And if we could get rid of the rollback, we could do it a lot easier than we can.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I, we just, we just had a meeting on Friday with the West Virginia State Police and the Berkeley County Sheriff's Office, Secretary Doug Buffington from the governor's office, who.
Homeland Security, yeah.
I greatly admire him. I, I really appreciated the governor sending him in. We, we, this, obviously, the state police does not have the staffing that they need. The Berkeley County Sheriff's Office does not have the staffing that we feel they need, or, or, or the sheriff says that we need. So, but the, the, the state police was wanting to get out of a rotation. They, they still want to take calls, but they wanted to get out of the rotation because of their staffing. And we're like, look, you can't. You know, we have, we have to have you here, and you have to be a major part in our, in our nine-one-one response. So, Secretary Buffington, you know, he wants to see this through. The governor wants to see this, see this work. And, and the sheriff's office, you know, finally said, look, because today they run at a two-to-one ratio. Sheriff's Department runs two calls, state police runs one. So, they offered a three-to-one. The sheriff's office will run three calls to one of the state police. So, and, but then the other thing is that with that three-to-one, is that the state police would serve their own process papers, which would take a burden off the sheriff's office. So, just working together, communicating is really, really important. And I really appreciate the fact that Access Strategies helped arrange this meeting. Senator Barrett was always a, a player, he's a major player in any meeting we ever have. Senator Barrett really works hard for us. But just sitting down and communicating is so important to finally get where you need to be. You've got great people in the room. We just got to figure it out and make it work for the public.
So, if those things happen, and the negotiations between you folks and the state police that is now in place? Are those arrangements finalized?
They're, they are not.
Not yet.
They're not yet. But we'll get there. We, we will get there.
Dude, I forgot about a minute left. The state police presence in Berkeley County, is it mainly taking some of the pressure off of the sheriff's department in terms of responding to calls in the county?
You hope it would.
Because I don't, I don't see them on I-81 much.
Let me put it in perspective. When Rob Blair left, retired from the state police in 2013, he was the captain of the attachment here in Martinsburg. He had thirty-five troopers there. Twelve years later, thirty-five thousand more people later, they have nineteen right now.
Right. And my understanding is that none of them want to be stationed in Berkeley County because it costs four hundred thousand dollars to buy a house.
Cost of living's high, yeah.
And that's, that's something that it's hard to get around right now in any occupation where you're employed by the state at a fixed salary. All around, everything's equal in fifty-five counties, it's hard to overcome that. All right. Yeah. Eddie and Steve are staying for the full hour. We appreciate that. By the way, Steve, Chris Montgomery in our Facebook comment section said the Purple Fiddle has the best peanut butter pie.
I didn't have any, but I believe him. I would believe that, yeah.
Next time.
All right.
Get the peanut butter pie.
Okay.
Apparently, that's the thing to get, guaranteeing their satisfaction on that one there, Steve.
It's on my menu the next time, I guess.
It's on the list, on the list. We are with Eddie Gokanower and Steve Catlett from the Berkeley County Commission, and always happy to have them for the full hour, at least once a month, sometimes twice. The county commission meetings are held Thursday mornings. Let's talk about MS four permitting. Steve, you mentioned that was part of what was on your agenda as you head to Charleston, and I guess after the show, right?
That's true. The MS four permit has been expired in Berkeley County for over three years. And we've been trying to get it, a new one, individual permit, where the only county in West Virginia that has a MS four permit, there's about fifty-some permits throughout the state. Most of them are municipalities. But part of the delay.
You're the only county, right?
We're the only county that has one. And it was required that we create a funding mechanism to fund a stormwater department to take care of issues that reflect to the Clear, the Clean Water Act that Congress passed. And so, you know, a lot of people think, well, why do you do this? Well, there had to be a, you know, budget created, and it's about one point six million a year. And at the time, years ago, before either one of us was on the commission, they decided to charge a forty-two dollar fee to all residents and all businesses in Berkeley County. There's probably forty-three thousand of those in Berkeley County. And that comes out to about a one point eight million dollar budget, but there's probably two hundred thousand that's not collected every year. And mostly those are ones that the people that are on public water and sewer get their bill monthly of two dollars and something a month, or three dollars or something a month, on their bill for water and sewer, public sewer. But if you don't have either, then you get a statements twice a year, an invoice to pay twenty-one dollars twice during the year. So, and it's been our goal since day one to, to try to not only eliminate it, and we've said publicly on, on your show many times, that if we get the safety tax, it'll all be used for public safety, but it should put us in a position financially to eliminate the fee, you know, totally, and just fund, but fund that department on our own. So, so that's, but our, our goal is to get it. One of the reasons the state has neglected to do it is they've been trying to create a statewide general permit. And then that would be just one permit for the whole state. And then those that had individual permits would become a member of the statewide general permit. And they came up, spent a year drafting this thing, and then the EPA came in and said, we don't like it. So, go back and do it over again. So, now it's been another year, and apparently they've come up with a plan now that EPA is acceptable. So, they're considering that again. But in the meantime, we've been pressing to get our individual permits so we could go ahead and make some adjustments on it. If you don't have a new one, you have to live by your old one. And so, we can't, we couldn't make any changes until we get a new permit or become part of the statewide general permit. The fear, though, is, is that if we get to a statewide general permit, it's going to be more stringent than the one that we have now. And it's, it's difficult. They're not only talking about holding stormwater, but also treating it. And so, it adds a whole new aspect to the thing. And it's a difficult challenge, to say the least. So.
Eddie?
It does. And, you know, Commissioner Hardy and myself have had a series of meetings with Senator Capito's office to try and get us out of the MS four qualification. So, you know, we're, we're trying, we're trying on every edge to, to try. And everybody hates this thing. We hate it. We hate it probably worse than anybody else, because that's, that's the thing that both of us always, not just us, all five of us get hit with, you know, because everybody hates it, you know. And they say, okay, well, you know, you have a, you have a forty-two dollars. You're only charging, you know, P and G, or you're only charging so-and-so forty-two dollars, what? Yes. But also, take in consideration, they've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in stormwater engineering. They've given up very expensive property for stormwater. So, when you take all these things in consideration, you know, you, you just want to hope that you're fair. That, that's all. Just, just try to be fair to everybody. But we, we despise it, and we're trying to find a way to get out. And if we can't, you know, like, like today, actually tomorrow, we'll, we'll be meeting, you know, with folks from DEP to try and figure a way out of this mandate.
I mean, let me say this, though. Even if we were to get not, not, if we got in a position where we were no longer required to have one, we still have to abide by the Clean Water Act that Congress has put in place. And, you know, obviously, that's, you still need to address stormwater, whether you have the permit or not. Because we have the permit, and we're, you know, looked over a lot heavier than other counties that don't. And so, you know, we have to follow those guidelines and, and address these issues. And it's something that you want to do. You want to protect our environment. You want clean water. Everybody agrees with that. But the average citizen doesn't like the fact that they've got to pay forty-two dollars a year to do it. And, you know, you can understand it. And he's right. Of everything that we have going on, even though it's forty-two dollars a year, we hear more complaints about that than anything else that, you know, involves a commission.
Yeah. Because I'm, I'm getting charged because it rained.
Yeah. And the people in Back Creek Valley especially were put in, initially, the, the growth area was the eighty-one quarter.
Sure.
And they could have limited to that, but they, they made it a county-wide permit at the time. And that included Back Creek Valley. And those folks really get upset about it because they, you know, I have my own well, I have my own septic, and I, my water stays on my property, and why am I paying, you know? And you can understand why they're upset.
It's a fair question, right?
Absolutely. And there's other parts on the, this side of the mountain, east side of the mountain, that, that are rural areas that, you know, have their own well and septics and stuff. And, and so, we understand it better than anyone that, you know, we want to fix it. But we're trying. We really are trying. And we have been for, for years trying to get it fixed.
Does the permit mandate that you charge every residential area in the county, or is that just how you chose to divide it?
It, it, the permit requires you to have a budget, okay? They don't care if, so, They don't care if, so if we were in a position to fund the budget ourselves without charging this fee, we could do that. It doesn't require you to have the fee. But at the time when they created this, they thought the best way to do it would be charge forty-three thousand residents and businesses forty-two dollars each, and that brought in the revenue that was needed.
Why is, uh, I guess, a business paying the same as an individual?
That's what was decided at the time, okay?
Okay.
And until we get a new permit, we can't change that, okay?
So they're locked in?
We have, actually, I, I serve on the stormwater board, and we have done, we've brought experts in and consultants in, and we've got a new plan if we get a new permit, how to reduce it on the, maybe eliminate Back Creek Valley totally, reduce it on the residential side. On this side of the mountain, it'd be based more, mo- most fees are not based on a flat fee. They're based on how much pervious, impervious area do you have? And that's how, that usually works. And that's how it should have been worked, you know, in the first place in my mind, but it wasn't. And so we've living with it until we get a new permit, and at some point, we're going to get this corrected.
You mentioned about forty-three thousand residents, uh, with more and more homes being built. Is there at least an opportunity that with more paying in, you could reduce that amount? So instead of forty-two, maybe you cut it in half and it's only twenty-one?
Uh, you know, it's been in place for a number of years, but at that point, the, the budget hasn't grown to the point where, you know, that's feasible at this point, but, uh, it, it could get there.
We really just want to, we want to do away with it. I mean, that's our, that's our goal. And, and if we can, if we can push stuff down, or we can find additional revenues, where we can absorb that in our budget, that's, that's what we'll do. But in, in the meantime, in, in our current budget, there's not an additional one point six million dollars.
Say, we spent the first half hour talking about such a tight budget. Now how do you find another one point six?
Yeah, but you know, man, you know, it's like, this, this, this county, this county commission and our staff, and I've said it before, we don't take the foot off the accelerator. We don't. And, and neither is any other agency in this county. You know, Steve and I, uh, serve on the, uh, safety committee for the school system. We're very involved in that. Of course, I've been involved in almost my entire, uh, career as far as, uh, safety stuff. But then, now, now we're involved in the facilities committee. So that, the schools are looking at what they need to do in, for the future. They're trying to, they're trying to gauge where they need to be at for the future, ten years out, I think is what they're looking at. But, but they're building schools right now. I mean, they're building new schools right now that, that they've taken, they took a few years off, but they're, they're trying to catch up. You know, um, our, our, our water district, you know, they're taking the river plant to, from six to ten, uh, million gallons a day. They're taking the, uh, Bunker Hill plant, which is coming along very nicely. Uh, it'll go from two to six, so the water district is going to be in good shape. I just recently spoke to, to Greg Rowe. I said, look, you know, you know, Greg, th- these guys and Jim Waller, they're doing, they're doing a lot of good stuff in this county right now, getting us in a position to where we'll have water for our future. And I said, look, we need to stop looking at a twenty-year window, let's look at a fifty-year window. Let's, let's isolate, uh, additional sites for, for new water for the future. When we're dead and gone, this, this, this will be taken care of. Our EMS, uh, systems are, I, I think are right now adequately staffed. I'd like to see another, uh, EMS unit on the west side of the county. Uh, but other than that, they're, they're doing an excellent job, and these guys are highly skilled. They're, they're really good at what they do. Uh, our fire, you know, our fire, uh, you know, is twenty-four, seven. We're, we're doing a lot of good stuff there. The volunteers are, are actively involved, and we want that. Uh, that's, that's important. So it, it just, the, we don't, we don't take the foot off. We can't, we can't.
We discussed this at our meeting in Canane over the weekend, uh, you know, the, in the safety bill, it's for public safety, but it also includes, uh, SROs or SSOs for the school system. And, you know, you got the Board of Ed promoting, trying to add state for money to hire those people. Well, we're not asking for money to hire them, we're asking to give us the ability to generate the money ourselves, and we will qualify then to hire those people, you know, currently. And I, we have to praise our school system on the great job they're doing for school safety. I mean, they have worked, they meet every month and work year-round on this thing and work really hard, and they've made a lot of wonderful improvements. But so far, they have SROs in the four high schools, and they have SSOs in the six middle schools, but we have twenty-some other schools. And if this safety bill would pass and we get it, we could hire then have a safety, either a safety, uh, safety officer or a resource officer in every school in Berkeley County. And that's the ultimate goal.
Have you guys been able to, uh, I mean, you're going to Charleston today, but, uh, have you been able to sit down with the governor specifically on this problem?
We have tried to get a meeting with him, we haven't got one yet, but, uh, we're working on it. In fact, when we were going down, and he was at the Labor Day breakfast, and he said, we need to get together. And I said, okay, we're coming down on the twenty-fourth, what's your schedule like? We'll meet with you too. And he, he said, well, I'm going to be out of town that week. And I said, so we'll, all right, we'll try again, then we'll try again, so.
Find out what town he's in and go there instead, Steve.
We would, we would.
We will have him in town, I think it's the seventeenth, he's coming in for economic development.
Got to do a purple fiddle summit.
Peanut butter diplomacy, right? Yeah, call it that there. Uh, with MS four, that, as I understand the history of this, it came about during the Toews administration, basically, in the Berkeley County Commission. And I, as I hear it, it was a way of getting local control of, uh, building and construction in the community, because before that, it had to all go through Charleston, and then would be approved back to Berkeley County. And this gave you local control of approval of development, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, but it was put in voluntarily. They, they didn't have to do it, they chose to, to participate.
Yes.
Okay, but since then, though, years later, it was mandatory that we had to have it, okay? We had to have this budget, and we had to create this department with, you know, staffing and all. So people need to understand that. It wasn't a choice with, for the staffing and for the budget. It was mandated by the EPA and the West Virginia DEP that you do this, or you're going to get fined if you don't. And so-
And it was during Doug Copenaver's administration that you had to find the funding source?
Exactly, and- They actually went to DC, and they took a trip to DC and talked to, uh, actually, Department of Justice is, who was going to bring the charges against them, and it was going to be substantial amount of money, uh, imposed against the county commission at that time, well, the county.
Now, with the Trump administration touting an emphasis on deregulation, and Governor Morrissey doing the same, would it stand to reason that this is the best time to appeal these MS four requirements?
That's, that's why we've been trying to, we've been having those meetings with Senator Capito's office. That's, that's the reason. It now's, now's probably the opportunity. So if we can get it, now's the time.
Yeah, but in saying that, you still have to abide by the Clean Water Act regardless of whether you have a permit or not. So i- i- it shouldn't, it doesn't alleviate the fact that you can't address stormwater then, you still have to do that.
So right now, the requirement with stormwater is just to store it, not treat it?
To hold it, yeah.
To hold it. What happens to it while it's being held?
Well, it evaporates.
Well, it's being filtered.
Goes into the ground and it-
It's, no, it's being filtered. I mean, there's, there's a-
Groundwater filtering, or there's a filtration system?
No, it's, it's-
Holding pond has a-
It's like a mulch, uh, and it's kind of-
Special soil they use in the bottom of it, and it, it's, it's absorbed in the ground or it evaporates in the air.
But then eventually, once it's, uh, once it's totally imperfect, imperfect, it will, it will have to be replaced, uh, taken out and, and new stuff put back in. So there will be expense, uh, to either the, the property owner at that time, whether it's the homeowners or a, a private company or whoever. So, you know, there, there are expenses coming down the road for this stuff.
Yeah.
Unless you can alter the way it's currently-
Unless we can alter, yeah, and we're, we're working, we're trying.
Off a different subject, uh, this kind of took on a life of its own in our comment section, which is, uh, can the county begin accepting credit cards for tax payments or fee payments?
Um, we do, except the sheriff's office does not in the tax office. And I've spoken with Rob Sheriff, Sheriff about that, and they have a new finance person there. And he told me just a few weeks ago that they're going to work to get that in place before the next tax season.
All right, but there's an answer for you in the comment section. As I said in the first half hour-
I had, I had some residents address me about it, you know? I went to pay my taxes, and, and I had my credit card and I couldn't pay it, and I had to leave then and come back at another time, which wasn't convenient for me, because I had to write a check. And so hopefully we're going to, but that's the sheriff's decision, and Rob's going to change that. And he promised me that he would, and, and they're going to take care of that, hopefully.
But you can pay online.
You can.
Through your credit card.
That's correct.
So you don't even have to go into the tax office? You can go find your tax record and, because I know that's the way I've been paying my taxes.
Jefferson County, there's always errors on the site, and then you have to go in person, and then that's still a problem, so.
And a lot of people like to go in person, because while they're there, they get the thing for their tags and all, for their vehicle stuff, so they can, you know, renew their tags and all, so.
And, and a lot of people just want to make sure. They've done their, their, their civic duty, and they went and they paid their taxes, and, and they're proud of that.
They did it personally instead.
And there's some things that like-
And some of those old guys, they don't like to use computers, so they were had to go anyway.
You also find out things in person, like, they were holding taxes from like, it was like twenty-twenty-two, and they're like, oh, by the way, you didn't pay these. And I was like, you didn't mail me anything, you didn't tell me anything. So if you go in, there's surprises for you to pay.
But in today's world, uh, you should have the ability to pay with plastic if you choose to do so. Now, usually there's a little fee involved, but most people don't care, they pay it, you know? It's just like the penny sales tag, everybody, oh, nobody cares about it. I mean, how many people use your credit card and pay an extra three percent on the bill instead of going and, you know what I'm saying? So, come on, come on, man.
If you go to a restaurant, they'll tell you in advance, cash is this price, credits is-
Do we want to make Berkeley County the safest county in West Virginia? Then give us a safety bill, please. I mean, it's that simple.
Uh, we have, uh, just about four minutes left. The, the impact fees have been delayed another month now, so November first. Why the delay, and is it a chance there'll be delayed till December first or twenty-twenty-six?
I don't think so. I think we're ready to go. The city and the, uh, Tishler Bice, uh, Tishler Bice went back and did recalculations, uh, in the city of, on their projected growth. And at the urging of the commission, uh, we, we've asked the, uh, Parks and Rec to do a, uh, cap- capital improvement plan in the city to involve, um, parks in the city, as well as the Berkeley County Schools to do a capital improvement plan. So, um, I think, I think the parks has already finished theirs. The school board is working on theirs, and, um, I know that, uh, Andy Blake and Gary Wine and Chad Weinbrenner met, I think it was last Friday, uh, to try and get some of this worked out on how this process will work. But, um, but no, that was the reason is, is to, we, once we found out that we had to include them, then we're saying, look, then, then let's, let's get the money that's collected in the city to be used in the city. And, and that's what we really wanted to be able to do at that point. So that's, that's the only reason, just try to get it-
It's going to require adjustment on some of the fees, so Matt, uh, Chad, Chad Weinbrenner's been working hard on it. They're, they're waiting on a final report from Tishler and Bice, and we should have that by mid-October. So we didn't really want to implement it until we got that final report. And we have the, that thing set exactly what that fee's going to be, because it is going to be adjusted some on the county admin part of it, because we've included the city now.
And it, it goes down from the initial projection?
It'll go down, it'll go down a couple hundred dollars probably, yeah.
Yeah, it's just spread out among more projects.
More people, yeah.
At this time.
More, more, more ability to have new growth, yeah.
All right, and, and that starts November first. It is, when is the next time that you can address that fee?
I think every year.
Year-round.
Every year.
Is it the first of the year or anytime you want?
I think we can do it anytime we want.
Any county commission meeting?
But usually you wait and do it annually and make a decision. You can change the capital improvements plan, you can change the fee structure every, from year to year.
How long will you wait to assess this particular fee that's going to be in place starting November first? Six months, three months, a year?
I think you have to give it at least a year. Yeah, because right now, we're implementing it, really, in a sense, a good time to implement it, because it's a slow part of the growth season, you know, and winter's coming on. So until we get through winter and then the whole summer and spring and the next year and fall, I think it's, you don't want to assess what it's going to bring in until that happens, you know? So I would say a year.
About a year. Are you concerned at all of any revenue that you're losing by having to delay it until November the first at this point?
I'm not, it's okay.
I mean, we've been waiting a long time, yeah.
We try to get it as close to being right as we can.
Government is so frustrating, you, you have to have a lot of patience, man, but, uh, you know what? We're getting there, and we're going to get there by November first, and it'll be here before you know it, and we won't lose that many. Like I said, this is a slow time for permitting to come in anyway, so it's a good time to implement this thing.
Got a minute left. That minute's yours. Anything else we didn't cover, now's the chance to blurt it out, Eddie.
I don't think so. I think we've uncovered about everything in the county, uh, you know, is, this, this, this guy here, you know, him and I, we travel a lot together. We, we go to lots of different places to try and make a difference. That's what we're doing. You know, as a matter of fact, uh, don't forget, Sunday, we got another meeting at two o'clock. So, uh, we, we're, we're, we're busy, and it's fun, uh, and we're trying to do good, trying to do right.
And believe me, we're doing a lot of good things in this community, really. I mean, I'm so proud of what we've done, particularly on our fire and ambulance stuff. I mean, it's phenomenal. The response times have all dropped in both, and it, it's great stuff. And all we care about is this community and the safety of this community and the quality of life of this community. We just want to make it better, and we're working every day to make that happen.
Yep.